All right, let's go ahead and get this going. All right, roll call?
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Jacob.
Here.
Approval in the minutes?
Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
My notes of presentation, it says there'll be... Oh, excuse me, you're right. Adopted the agenda.
Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
All right. And I have presentation.
It was just in there's a placeholder, we don't have anything under there, so there's nothing there.
Okay. All right. So, second reading of the ordinances? An ordinance establishing a GB general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the east side of HH Highway, north of Highway 50 and south of Veterans Road.
This is a small triangular piece of land that is, as you described, it's on between HH Right of Way and Highway 13 Right of Way. It is surrounded by property that was previously annexed into the city. City and zone general business earlier this year in August. You held a hearing and a first reading on this ordinance two weeks ago. Since that time, staff's not received any additional comment. We would recommend approval by passage.
Anybody got any questions from Tuesday?
Move to approve.
This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
All right. An ordinance establishing an R1 single-family residence district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as Right of Way for Veterans Road between Enterprise Avenue and Cahill subdivision.
You also annexed in this land at your previous council meeting and held a public hearing and a first reading of this ordinance, which would zone the property for single-family residential development. The land south of it is also R1 single-family residence land. This tract of land is, for the most part, is the north half of the Right of Way for Veterans Road between Enterprise Avenue and where Veterans Road takes up again in the Cahill subdivision. Staff recommends approval. We've not had any additional comments since the last meeting.
Move to approve. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a lease agreement with the city of Warrensburg and Warrensburg Main Street, Inc., in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is for the continuation of the lease that we have on the property for winter activities here at this building. They plan on having two forward market events a month beginning December 2nd. Staff has had to review results with the leasing on this and around the issues. Ask the council to approve.
Any questions?
How many vendors do we know? How many vendors?
I think it's up to 12.
Yeah, there she is.
Typically, that's about all we can sit in here, you know, is right by that table.
Okay.
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a lease agreement with the city of Warrensburg and Warrensburg Main Street Incorporated in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
All right. Exercising year three option on contract with the retail coach.
As councilors are aware, we did enter into a contract two years ago with retail coach to do a lot of data analysis for us and preparing materials necessary to be successful in recruiting retail businesses to our community. As part of the contract, we can renew that for a third year. So, at this time, staff would recommend exercising that option and renewing that. And then next year, we will put the entire contract out for rebid. Make sure it's competitive and we have the best representative force to help us with that.
Would the retail coach be a player in the Dallas market back there? Probably.
They're based out of Texas.
Okay.
So, yeah, they have probably a lot of tax in Texas than they do anywhere else.
Good.
That's why I moved to approve.
Yeah.
Motion. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the delivery of not to exceed $8,250,000 principal amount of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, refunding certificates of participation series 2017 for the purpose of providing funds to refinance projects for the city and authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with the delivery of said certificates.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Last council meeting on the 23rd, we discussed the opportunity to refinance certificates 2009 to 2010. This ordinance sets parameters for council to go to market with the refunding. There has been one small change. The municipal advisor and bond council has advised the city to move up the refunding because of the proposed tax changes. So, we're going to move it from January to December. That being because the current language and the tax reform prohibits advanced refinancing, which is basically what this refunding falls under. So, we would still be able to have a, hopefully, a tax exempt bond issue, but it wouldn't be bank qualified. So, if you guys have any other questions, we have Jack Dillonham and Todd Goffin from Piper here and Sid Updose here as well.
Bank qualified is what gets us that lower interest rate?
Yes, that is. So, the interest rate that we're expecting right now is not much different from what we showed last council meeting. It's a little higher, but it's not much different.
So, just curious, and how long is that out for then?
It would be the same, the same amount, I'd say, about 32. Because we have one of the issues longer than the other. So, it would be the same amount of time. We wouldn't want to add any time off to it or any addition to it. It's basically just refinancing to get a lower interest rate.
Your motion. Move to pass said ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the delivery of not to exceed $8,250,000 principal amount of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, refunding certificates of participation series 2017 for the purpose of providing funds to refinance projects for the city and authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with the delivery of said certificates. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation and the city clerk to execute a contract before ratification by the park board with Cunningham Recreation for the inclusive playground equipment project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'd like to introduce some people that are here tonight that have helped us get to this point. First of all, I'd like to introduce Scott Holberg with Johnson County Board of Service and Ryse. Scott, could you say it please? And he also has a staff member, Jason Duffy. Oh. Jason Duffy. And who else?
We have Mark Lassner and Suzie Dardes on our foundation and our committee.
Thank you very much. And then we have Chris Buckland. He's our grant administrator for the project. Chris, could you say it?
Yeah. Wouldn't I need you all?
And then we have Kyle Cruz. He's our recreation superintendent. And he'll be the staff person that'll take over after I retire. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, everybody. Tonight, Mayor and council, you have an ordinance before you that has taken us two short years to get to you. Because in September of 2015, Scott Holberg shared a vision he had for, with the park board, to develop an inclusive playground that would meet all children's needs as well as young adults. He had a great vision. He also wanted to try to raise the funds for this project and start a committee. He has a committee that's working very hard. And I'll pass this book around. It's an inclusive playground advertisement. And there are equipment in here that anyone could purchase. And there's also nice pictures as well as the dollar amount. And as Scott said, you can purchase all of those if you'd like. Then in March of 2016, the park board asked that I look for a grant to help with this project, to help cover some of the cost. And we did that. We looked at the LWCF grant through the Department of Natural Resources. And as you know, we received that in October of 2016. Then in March through July of 2017, Johnson County Board of Services held public meetings to find out what the public wanted to see in this inclusive playground. And in July of 2017, the park board hired grant administrator, Chris Buckland, to help with this project because being that it's a grant, being that we're getting donations for the total cost of the project, we needed someone to really make sure that we were doing the grant in the right manner. Chris has an extensive background. He used to administrate the LWCF grants. He has retired, and so it was a great fit for us. We advertised it and Chris put in his application. In September of 2017, the RFP was let for the fabrication as well as installing the inclusive playground in Cave Hollow Park. We received five bids that you have in front of you. After reviewing the bids, we went through an extensive evaluation program with the staff, with JCPS and their staff, as well as the committee, was involved in this evaluation process. And our grant administrator was there as well to figure out what was going to be best for us. What we found is Cunningham Recreation provided us the best inclusive playground. They weren't the lowest bid, but they were the best bid. We scored them. Cunningham scored 100 points over everyone else. And the reason for that is because it was, it had all the components that we asked for as well as it has a lot of things that everyone can use. And so Scott can talk about that more if you'd like to hear from him. He's really excited about this company. And so what we're asking tonight is that you approve that we work with Cunningham Recreation and that we won't spend more than $363,032.19. That was what their bid was for. I'll be glad to open up for any questions and be glad to let you ask anybody that I introduced tonight if you have questions for them as well.
I mean, I was just looking at the process. I know you touched on it a little bit there. But I noticed that, I mean, between Cunningham Recreation and Respec Construction, there's about 30, almost $35,000 difference. Can you share what more we're going to get that justify this $35,000?
It's all the inclusive play. And there's quite a bit more equipment that we're going to receive with this project from Cunningham than what we're going to receive from RCS. RCS, the playground company that they utilized, was not a playground company that is, I mean, it's it's not as commercial as Cunningham and Game Time is. And so we were not, we weren't going to be able to get as big a bang for our buck, is what it boiled down to. And we took through all their experiences. We had a nice criteria, scope of work, everything that, you know, you usually do when you're doing that evaluation. And so we really looked closely at that because that would be great if, you know, that would work for us as far as RCS or CI could do that project. But it just wasn't going to match what Cunningham has here.
And the other question I had is the ordinance calls out Cunningham Recreation, but the bid is Play Care Wisconsin, doing business as Game Time. Is this correct?
Cunningham Recreation is correct. They're all in one. They're all one company, Play Corps, Cunningham, and Game Time are all one, one firm. Play Corps attaches to others as well, Play and Structure also put in a bid. And they're attached to Play Corps as well. They're sister companies when it moves to that direction. But Game Time, Cunningham, and Play Corps are all one together.
Okay. Do we need to make a change in the ordinance to specify the connection between the two of them? No?
No.
Good question. So, what are you thinking of start? Our timeline is that we would like to break ground in January. If we can give the equipment ordered by December, then we won't start construction until maybe late February. Hope to have it done by May to have a grand opening. We also want to do a community bill day in late May so that the community can come out and finish the project. Game Time, Cunningham are really great with that. They'll spearhead that for us and it will be a great project for the community to be able to say that they had a hand in it. And so that was in our RFP as well. They are planning on doing that for us.
Was there an onsite pre-bid meeting?
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay. And all of the companies attended that?
I can't tell you that all the companies attended that put in a bid.
Cunningham did though.
But Cunningham was there as well. And I know that the second in line was there and RC, CI was there as well. So, those three were available at the pre-bid meeting. Jason knows that better than I. He's our project manager with the city. He kept track of that and apologized that I can't tell you.
No, that's fine. I just, I didn't see that anywhere.
So, for the audience, most of it was on grant money, donated money? Yes, sir, I guess so. It will be all, the grant is the part of the park budget. But in our budget has listed this project, but we won't spend more than what is donated. And so Scott is still looking for donations as far as this project goes. We have to have 85% of the donations before we even order the playground pod. The main focus right now will be this whole project. What you see on this is the $363,000, but our main focus is going to be the playground pod because that is the one, if you remember, we talked about a grant through Missouri Parks and Recreation. That is the one that will get dollar for dollar on that particular grant. And so that's what we're trying to go off of, is try to get dollar for dollar on the playground pod. And the playground pod is this area here. It's the ramps and there's activities, slides, and a weight balancing apparatus back here. There's a tunnel. So, what we want to do is start working with the company, Cunningham, and getting exactly what will work for us on that playground pod. I think the question I'd be curious of, how much money have you got so far and how much more you need? Okay, we have $150,000. And Scott?
You mind if I come up? I've been trying to be quiet this morning. She's doing a good job. So, one of the things, before I answer your question, let me start over or start for something. We went through several of the different vendors. I got to thank my wife for all the parks we visited and stuff. I went up with the representative from Cunningham, spent five and a half hours actually touring parks because, you know, my goal is a quality park for Warrensburg, not his commission or their commission and that bit. So, we have right now cash in hand, right at $90,000, okay? Then we have some other donations going with what DODI has through Parks Board and some of those things. We have about, I would say, half of what we actually need. And so let me talk to you a little bit about that. I knew when we started this project that there'd be phases. And this is a nice park project. We have to have, you know, 5,600 square feet. So, it is very possible, on phase one, as we've been calling it, that we will build this piece that we have, the grant, and potentially drive a sidewalk right across there, have this area for next steps of running. Some of the equipment on this particular drawing is not what we're going to buy. And let me explain that to you. Not Game Time, Play Corps, who is the manufacturer of two of the bidders, you know, they're manufacturing reps, same on it. They have like this thing called a rockin' glider. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, it's not inclusive and it's not good. It's not dangerous, but it's not what we're going to buy. In that book is the glider that we're going to purchase. And so we need to work with this particular vendor now that we've come to a conclusion of who can service us and actually start enhancing the design a bit, okay? So, there needs to be some work here. It lays out well with the location that we're going to go. I would tell you it's practically perfect. I have worked with enough manufacturing and construction type projects that nobody has everything. And so each piece of it is not exactly. All that we want, this particular company called AFCO, has some parts and, excuse me. So, as we go out and talk to businesses and other folks that raise funds for those things, that will also offset the grant. So, cash in hand again, to get right back to the question, and thank you for letting me deviate a little bit, is about $90,000 cash. We definitely, if I had had somebody that would write us a check for $85,000 for Christmas, you know, that would put us totally over it. Do I think we'll get it? Yeah. I don't have any doubt on that. Will we have to maybe do a second phase? Yeah. But I've been saying that from day one. I have visited numerous parks in the state. And then when I went to Boston, I stopped at several different parks on the way home. And every single one of these parks that I've seen have been done to phases because very few communities can come up with, you know, the half a million dollars or whatever it takes. And then the other thing is, if you look at what we've done for the size of the community we are, we should be really proud, okay? And I'm looking at people who have also helped. I mean, you know, I just know that. So, anyway, I definitely want to move forward, but any other questions or?
How many of these inclusive playgrounds has Cunningham done?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. I know that I went and saw all of the ones in Kansas City I visited for a variety charities were done by these folks. And they worked with Unlimited Play, a lady named Natalie Halpin, who has Switch vendors. They also apply and stuff like that. I don't know the reasoning why as far as that goes. But I have a recommendation from Kristen at Independence to use these folks for the park. I went up after we got the bids, we called a couple of people and stuff. And then I went up to the different parks in the area and looked for quality of equipment and whatnot. So, total amount, I really couldn't tell you, but I know they've built several of the really good parks up there.
Okay.
So.
And Game Time and Play Corps has done across the nation. They have done this national demonstration site that NPR has picked up for the grant. And Alton, they were having their grand opening. They talked about the community build and that kind of thing. And so they're very involved in inclusive playgrounds, but playgrounds across the nation.
I would like to answer your question on Respec. Great contractor, local contract. I saw the pictures. It wasn't inclusive. There's no way I could do that. So, good contractor. So, and I know he wants to get in the business. Love to help him, but.
No, I just wanted to get it on record. There was a big difference there, so I just wanted to.
No. DODI asked us specifically to run through that because he is local. Because originally I said, nope. And she said, yes. So, we did. That's the truth. And I would chat with him.
I don't have a problem. I just, they give us a number, so you got to ask the question.
It is a fair question. And we try to be local, right? Because I'm also local.
Is the bed amount included with the surface?
Yes, sir, it does.
And then did they provide any samples and materials that I would recommend that the fire department test flammability? I've seen in numerous, several communities that maybe they shamed out a $200,000, $300,000 playground. And so I'm inclined to say just put it a few matches and it all goes.
One of the things that they've talked about as well is their warranty. And they're going to stand behind that as well, a warranty for the surface because it is, it is a surface that is great for inclusive and it's the best surface that you get.
The surface does match National Fire Code regulations as far as flammability.
I'm just saying, you all want to test it because we've been, I've been in a community that's been told before. We take it to the fire department and it's very flammable.
Thanks for, you and I chatted about that and I didn't remember honestly, but thanks for any of that. I don't.
Any questions? Your motion.
Need to move to second reading? Said to pass second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation and the city clerk to execute a contract before ratification by the park board with Cunningham Recreation for the inclusive playground equipment project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
All right. A revol- revolution. A resolution of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, supporting and encouraging the efforts by Iceberg Development to develop 48 units of family affordable housing on Lot 6 Hawthorne Development.
So, as councilors are aware, this is a developer that has an option on Lot 6, which the city owns. And they are putting forward an application for a tax credit housing project. And it's always helpful to have letters of support. The deadline for application continues to move back. The HTC continues to postpone that and put it off. But we are still hoping that early next year, the application is in and we're making some decisions in the spring. And there may be a possibility at some point in the future that we may have to come back and extend the option on the property for the developer as well. But at this point, we're just, they're asking for a resolution of support that include as part of their application process. We did provide one of these resolutions of support also for the developer that's looking to do a project on Lot 7, not right across the street.
Move to approve. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob. Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Apparently, this is a council not listed on the agenda.
Go back there. Anybody sign that sheet way back there for?
Nope. All right. Missed ladies and matters from the mayor and our city council. I don't have anything. All right. City management report?
So, late last week, I did go to another ICSC deal-making conference in Dallas, Texas. It was same structure, same format as the Chicago conferences, but a different demographic, different regional center. So, it was focused mainly on the entire region of the state of Texas as well as Oklahoma. I will say, I was pleasantly surprised that it seemed it was actually a bigger conference than even Chicago's. A lot more representatives from the retail industry were there, and I was able to make a couple of contacts with some retail companies that I was not able to do in Las Vegas or in Chicago. So, I think it was a worthwhile trip. I think it's something that we should probably consider potentially having a booth at every other year I'll go, if I would do it every year like I would Chicago. But there was definitely a big presence there. You know, FFO, which has opened here recently, has expanded out of the Dallas, Oklahoma region and area, and so, there are several retail entities looking to do the same right now. I think it's helpful to be down there. Also, I was there, I had a conversation with a retail coach and a couple others about probably the need to create a similar deal-making conference for our region. So, when you're talking St. Louis, Kansas City, Des Moines, Omaha, we don't really necessarily fit in the Chicago market or the Dallas market, and so, I got some commitment from retail coach to begin some conversations with ICSC about a Midwest conference and having it housed, hosted either by St. Louis or Kansas City, and focus on this donut hole of a region, so it's a little bit more fitting. I also remind the council that here in a couple weeks, we will have the annual Christmas party for employees, and we'll be doing a recognition for years of service as well. So, be welcome to come and help express our appreciation to our employees that have served us for a long time and continue to do great work for us. I don't think I have anything else to say.
Oh, on November seventh, we had a conference call with S and P, and they affirmed us as A-plus rating on the new issue that we're gonna do. It's a report from S and P. So, so now we have a long-term debt rating of A-plus, and then we have a GL bond rating of double A negative. Which, the A-plus rating is, is one of the best ratings you can get for a city of our size. They were mulling over the issues, maybe giving us a positive outlook. They didn't give it to us this time, but I'm pretty sure if we, if we do another issue, we'll get a positive outlook, which is a notch above where we are right now, and the next step will be an increase, uh, increase in rating. The bad news, with that good news, the sales tax down again, and I did have a discussion with our auditors. Our auditors left on Thursday last week, and one of the biggest things they noticed was closing of economy lumber. That was a, a large hit to us, so. That was noted, and I think it might be in a footnote of the audit as well.
When do you anticipate seeing revenues and big old tire and FFO?
I would, I would assume we would get this month.
Okay.
So, we should see them the, on our next report, which would be the report for November, we should see, we should see some sort of, some sort of change.
Okay.
To see where we might be. But the auditors also mentioned that they thought that online sales were hurting us as a revenue.
Oh, yeah.
Especially since, since we don't actually accept any or, or get any revenue from online sales like some other states.
Well, you may not see it right away because the Department of Revenue, sometimes they won't tell you, they won't create you as a monthly until after you've paid a quarter.
Yeah. Oh, and that's another issue of the state, state reporting. They, they moved to a new system, and so, now the last, if you pay sales tax within the last three days of the month, it won't be counted towards that month, it'll go towards the next month.
Wanted to let the council know that the Christmas parade has returned, or is gonna return to Warrensburg on December first. Dwayne Jackson, Ben Exchamel, getting that started again. Some of the car show, or car enthusiasts have their vehicles currently supposed to lift in the parade, so.
I think we're anticipating about fifteen classy cars all the way up.
Police, car, public works is also involved in it, so.
Catch your car, Mayor.
I'll possibly ride in one of them.
I only have a special place for you.
Back of the bus.
That's right.
Let, I'll be driving my car.
He may need a ride.
You have another ride, Randy?
Yes, sir.
Nothing additional.
Nothing additional here either.
All right.
We do have a park board meeting Wednesday night. We'll discuss the inclusive playground there as well, and so, we'll start to work on, on getting the playground ordered.
I don't wanna stand between anybody, get out of here. Got a couple of things. We got, received a donation for the LED traffic flares that you see. They've got all kinds of different patterns on them, and what these will do is they'll replace the ones that we have in the trunks now that are the flammable ones. These are rechargeable. We received the donation from the Spirit of Blue Foundation, who distributes money for the Law Enforcement United. It's a national organization of active and retired law enforcement officers, and Jeff Reynolds wrote it up, and we've got enough of these for all of our cars. It was about seventy-one hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents worth, and so, it's, it does all kinds of neat stuff. Apparently, the fire chief has great knowledge of these.
Either that or he's gonna break it.
Yeah, if he breaks it, he buys it. We got a first-of-its-kind pizza with police at Twister Sports, thanks to Councilwoman Johnston. Had a great turnout there with a lot of kids getting, getting to meet their police and us getting to meet them, and then a couple days later, we had chilling with the cop at Steak and Shake. We partnered with UCM, and Steak and Shake in Sedexo, they serve two-hundred-and-sixty-five milkshakes.
Wow.
Yours truly had one, and so, my vest is fitting a little tighter tonight. And then, really, most importantly, not most importantly, but equally as importantly, we had a human trafficking seminar this last Thursday. Emily Russell from the Attorney General's office and Christine McDonald, who is a survivor of human trafficking, presented to nearly a hundred community members and police, mostly community members. I was really excited to see that. They came out, learned what human trafficking is and how to recognize the signs, and so, now we've got extra eyes and ears out there in our community to see if we do see something like that, and certainly, there's evidence that it exists here in our community as well. So, in fact, Barbie came, and Greg came as well, and Doyle from the fire department did. So, good group, great seminar. We had two sessions, and we're really excited about that. Lastly, we're going live with our wreckage, records management system tomorrow. It's been a long year. I don't, I don't know if y'all remember. You approved that large project a little more than a year ago, and it's actually coming to fruition starting tomorrow. So, if you see a lot of stressed-out police, you'll know why. Just find them an extra donut, and they'll be happy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Nope. I did a bunch of stuff for Veterans Day there, so, then over Project Community Connect on Friday, and then on Saturday, it was, Saturday, we're at the American Legion, then from there to Jim Whitfield Leadership Academy, which is, if you get a chance to go tour that building, they did a very impressive job on that, and then over to the VA home for, for their ceremony out there, so. And Vicky Hatzer was traveling the whole entire time with us, so she was in Warrensburg from eleven o'clock until about five o'clock that evening, so she got a great opportunity to see Warrensburg. Other than that? Move for a close session. Somebody wants to read it.
Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to section six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to: One, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the city and its confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys. Two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employee by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Twelve, documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Did you have any questions for refinancing?
I don't know. It's kind of lit.
Oh, no. No, it's a deal, and it's all in, and. Jump on it while, while you still can, you know, lock it in.
Yeah.
There pop over there, or do I need to get one here?
Uh, there's some there. Well, there's a lot of water.
Let me go see what's back here.
You got a short, this is an early night for him.